A regular city council meeting. Call to order, declare our. Chief Coy, and I'll do the indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cool, badge your heads if you like. Father God, thank you so much for this day. Thank you so much for this opportunity for us to sit here and to be on this horseshoe and for all the citizens and people that are here. Father God, just be with us as we go through today and make the decisions in which we are called to do and to vote our conscience. Father God, just continue to protect our city employees, our police and fire. Your name, amen. All right, item number two, presentation by Mayor Godwin for certificates of volunteer of the year, John Tardibono and Beth Mikola. Is that Mikola? I have that same problem. If you two will come up, I'll be happy to do this real quick. So I'll do, come over here real quick so I can explain what this is. So we have John and Beth that are going to be our volunteers of the year with the recycling. They're, they're month in, a month out without, without fail. And we really. Twenty twenty-three volunteer of the year. So, and with that, we'll also give you your certificate, John. Make sure that's all spelled right. All right. Thank you guys so much.
Are we streaming?
Ah, hey, you know what? I can do that. All right. Who is the third person that just came up?
You have a young lady on macro too that just walked in.
Okay, good deal. We got a couple, so I'll have to find them. The presentations of Ms. Guatemala and Ms. Guatemala that last year and this year. So, and I would just so like to stand on this side and have a microphone. That really helps. Booyah, all right. So I have a dumb lady. And Brian just came in. I have Maya. And what was the other? Adeline? Well, we find that one. Elliot? Okay, right there. We have Brian as well. Tried to organize this as best I could. Brian, and then, one more time. Nellie. Nellie, right there, very cool. All right, so. One thing that's pretty cool is that here in War Acres, we have had Ms. Guatemala and actually Ms. Guatemala Universe came in. And she was part of your celebration. And that was really, really cool, very honored. And I know that there was a lot of work that went into that. And I know that you all go into a lot of work to do all the things that you do. I even, at the Ms. Mexico, Guatemala, or Ms. Mexico, Oklahoma, I was a judge, and it's very difficult, especially when you don't know what you're doing. I know you all. And all the work that you guys have put. You're going to be doing coming forward. So with that, I will be happy to give you, you guys, your certificates. And we have Nellie. Brian. Elliot. Maya. And the dumb lady. Dumb lady. All right. Very grateful for you guys to have that here in War Acres and just enjoying the fact that we have a lot of culture here. And there's so many Guatemalans. So love that you guys are part of the community. Glad that we can celebrate you guys today. Thank you. Well, the fact that we get to celebrate, celebrate culture here in War Acres is pretty awesome. We're going to do a formal, open forum questionnaire for a public comment from Mr. Colin Walkie.
Members, and I'll be brief. My name is Colin Walkie, and I am the attorney for Cherokee Crossing Homeowners Association. And I'm here speaking on their behalf very briefly. I simply want to bring to the council and mayor's attention again, as well as the city attorney, a health and drainage issue that we have going on. This is located at the intersection of North Comanche Avenue and Hidden Trail Lane. Since October of 2022, we have filed at least four complaints with the city in order to have drainage areas taken care of by property owners. Those property owners include Meek Development, which owns the common area where this drainage is located. And the drainage is being backed up due to debris. Sorts of things, et cetera. Contact Mr. Love to discuss the situation. And long story short, this is a serious concern that we need to have addressed because it's falling back on homeowners at the moment. And there's a lot of other issues going on in that development. So we're just looking for the city council to step in and help us with some code enforcement issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Do, do we get to comment on?
Colin Walkie, W-A-L-K-E.
Thank you. All right, item number three, consent docket. Individual items may be deleted from the consent docket for discussion under action item number four. Look for a motion.
I approve the items in number three consent docket, A, B, and C, and D.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Morris?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Bruntair?
Yay.
Steele?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Meyer?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, receive reports from the staff. Chairman, start with you.
Just like to recognize all the employees that make the public works work. Pam's group that does the billing, all the guys in the field that keeps everything running. We have Woodard that does the inspections.
Absolutely. Thank you. Go to.
I don't have anything to add to the report except for, sorry, that we did finish the application for the STBGUZA grant and submitted that to ACOG for the intersection at 63rd and MacArthur. We'll hear back on that either in January or February.
Awesome. And I talked to Mike Wallace, or not Mike Wallace, that's a reporter, Craig Wallace, before the meeting. And he had mentioned that we actually on 63rd and MacArthur that, or James Cap, we got around a 10% discount, which around $40,000 discount. Came to work with the same company. So it came in under budget. So it's fantastic.
And Craig called me.
And Craig called you?
Craig, and I have to tell you, I always give him a hard time because every time he calls, he's needing more money for something. I had just gotten the email and just finished reading the email, and I looked down and he's calling. So you saved me money this time? What?
It was a great day. It was a great day.
It was great. Everything comes in.
Pam was so excited. City clerk, anything? Besides celebrating Craig?
No, I'm just very glad something came under budget.
All right. City attorney?
Nothing to add, but there'll be a quick presentation under the PD's report on a contract that'll be in front of you that we weren't able to get on this agenda, but the representative is here. So just FYI.
Good deal. Coy?
I don't have anything to add to the. To appease the citizens and basically just to reduce the disruption on a Saturday of the incredibly loud storm sirens, which are necessary. We're still meeting the industry standard, but we're doing a growl test. So instead of a three-minute-long storm siren check, the growl test spins and it checks its wireless communication, the battery backup, and everything else that's necessary. But it's much less loud and much quicker, so.
But it is the sound of our people.
Yes, the callers have been reduced.
Absolutely. Steve, Eddie?
Okay, I got a couple of quick things. And like the city attorney said, we apologize for that. There was a little bit of a miscommunication on this contract. It's for services, for collection, for warrants and stuff. There's been a lot of changes to the state law on how we can and collect past due warrants. Tight our hands quite a bit on what we can and can't do on getting those fees from the law enforcement side and putting people in jail, but not so much from the collection agency side. So this gentleman traveled a little distance to be here tonight. So we're going to go ahead and hear from him, and then we'll have a contract for you next month. The two things I wanted to report on. Another great flock story, October 25th, gentleman got into a domestic altercation in McLeod and wound up stabbing two of his sons and fled. At 10:30 that night, the Potawatomi County Sheriff's Office entered him and his vehicle into NCIC as a wanted felon. Five hours later, he finds his way to War Acres, America and enters our town at 36th and MacArthur. We caught up movement at 61st and MacArthur, and after a brief altercation, took him into custody.
Awesome.
Recovered several knives out of the vehicle and stuff. So flock. Keeping our.
That's awesome.
Without a doubt. I always wonder why these bad guys travel so great distances to find our little square miles. Square miles of earth, but they do.
Well, I'm glad that we can accommodate.
The other thing, I was hoping that one of my, one of my new officers, Casey Lob, is on duty tonight. They're on a call right now. So he was supposed to be here, but what I wanted to report to you, the, the young officer's graduated from the police academy Friday a week ago. But the deal with Casey, he was given an award for the top academic in the academy with a near-perfect academic. And more importantly and impressive to me, he was given the outstanding character award, which was based on his interaction with the other cadets, the staff, his willingness to help people in the academy, his willingness, as they said, to make us smile when we really needed to, and just his overall demeanor. So we're real proud of the fact that, that we were able to, that he got those two awards, and that's the kind of officers that we've got here in our city. And I'm proud to have him as one of our officers.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
And with that, we will turn it over to this attorney over here who will give you a briefing on this collection stuff.
First thing, you clerk, I'm not an attorney.
Okay.
I'm the chief executive, I'm the chief executive director of Client Services of Purdue. I've been with them for 46 years. I know a thing or two about them. But I am not an attorney. Excuse me if I.
I would disclaim that too. I mean, sorry.
I'd like to hand out a couple of things, if I could, for you all to glance at. What we are, what we would like to do is sign a contract with you all to help you with your collection, the link to collection services. I've had the opportunity to meet with the chief and his staff. I've had the opportunity to Major Anderson has gone over our contract. It's been okay by your, your legal team. And what we do is basically, like I said, we are a professional collection law firm.
Doing this for 52 years. We are in nine states. 16 offices. I currently am based in Amarillo. We represent a lot of your neighbors. One of them is Bethany. We use them as a reference. The mayor's the first one that, that contacted. Minutes to visit with him. Now, where the chief sees that there is a need for us, the first thing I'd like to mention to you, you were talking about money. Our services are free. It's an add-on fee. The people that choose not to pay you on time and in a proper manner, when, when they pay us, that's, that's how we get our fee. So basically, if we don't collect, we don't get paid. And therefore, we work very hard. I've kind of gotten used to eating two or three times a day. And we, in order to do that, we have to keep signing contracts and keep collecting these items. We're very, we are very, very good at the things that. Notifying people. We basically send two letters in reference to you, Mr. Love. We have addressed, the next letter's going out for us. We've addressed a new law that's going into effect November 1st. Obviously, if, if you let Mr. Love until you have an opportunity to okay it. But I think you've seen the contract, and you added your, you added the paragraph, we added the paragraph that you had. And, and I think we made all the changes that you requested in the contract. So I know you all have important things to discuss this evening, but I'm here to ask you that if you'll give us the opportunity to represent you. It's a, it's a one-year contract with a 30-day out. If you don't like us, and then you can ask us to quit working for you in 30 days. That, I hope that won't happen. It doesn't happen very often because we are very, very good at what we do. So that's the, that's the short presentation. If any of you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain, answer any questions that you may have. We do have an officer in Oklahoma City, but I am out of Amarillo. So the majority of work will be done out. Have a call center there. We have three attorneys there that'll work for you. And we have 64 attorneys for the law firm. They're, they're at your disposal if you need anything at all. So with that, Mr. Love, do you have, do you have anything, mayor, council members? Do you have any questions of me this evening?
Very briefly, the, as a bit of context, War Acres is one of the only cities I know of that wasn't using a firm to try and collect its court debt. It was also one of the only cities that was actually using the city marshal position to try and serve their warrants. As you know, our longtime marshal, warrant officer, but the legal term is marshal, is retiring. It's, just to be blunt, it's a position that a lot of cities don't have because just financially, they can't afford to have one. We were able to have one for many years, probably at a discounted rate from what Roger would have to pay to get a new one. I, I can't speak to Purdue's quality only because where I'm. Just signed a contract with them at the village. And so we're just getting going, but I can at least say that the. Such that they were, were very easy. They sent us a contract. I sent revisions. They made them all. Used by. And their contract terms are a little bit different than the one we had at the village for a long time, which was if we send it to them, they get their fee even if we collect the money. The other practical reality is the reason, I'm not sure that our marshal. With some of the. Part of his. Which was to pick people up and bring them back to us. New state law changes severely hampers our ability to do that. And so frankly, they were looking even before the state law change, but with the state law change, it only emphasizes the need to take it out of the PD's hands and have a professional do what they do.
And I'll tell you, I met Purdue at, I think it was the Oklahoma City Managers.
Yeah, sure.
Organization, conference this last time. So showing up matters. It's always good. Yeah, whenever we sat down and talked, we discussed the fact that this, because the new law is coming into place, that this would be a really good option. But also the fact that since we did lose Vickers, that we're not also having to replace him, and therefore it helps with our budget as well. So if they, you know, private, private industry, I think, works more and more all the time. So very thankful for you to come. Any other questions, though?
Could you explain the new law?
I wish I could.
Got a couple of hours.
I don't know.
I did two solid hours for the Municipal Judges Association. I don't think you have.
And they still said, what?
So what, what, it takes it out of our.
Essentially, we're only talking about people who have either pled guilty or no contest, or have gone to trial and been found guilty. Judges assigned a financial penalty, and they have refused to pay us.
Okay.
Then at that point, there's a whole new statutory process, but we will eventually send them to Purdue. And then at that point, it's Purdue, they, they only get paid if they collect. And what they collect, it.
So they give us our share and then they take a percentage?
So a traditional collection agency would take 30, 35% out of your amount, and so you're not getting all your money, but you're getting some of it, which is more than if you did yourself. God, it's been decades now. Actually, Title 11, which is. So that the public entities get their full. Become a higher amount. Only because they didn't. With the court.
Okay.
So it does become an extra 30, 35. I can't remember the percent.
Yes.
Okay, so we, we get our, okay.
And for clarification, chief and his staff do everything they possibly can to work with people that break the law. They contact them. They give them opportunities to pay. They ask them if, is there any circumstance where we can help you? Agreements, et cetera, your hardship. They do everything they possibly can before it's turned over, before it will be turned over to us. So you're very fortunate to have, I met your two ladies and met with the two ladies you have. You're very fortunate to have some people working for you that work as hard as they do and are concerned as they are about what. Oh, they've been vented very well before they'd ever be turned over to us. And yes, ma'am, you get 100% of your money. And our 30% will come off, will, will be added to the people that.
Okay.
Choose not to pay. Yes, ma'am. And Mr. Love, we're also looking forward to going to work for the village. As you know, we've had, there's been a delay with the new law, our wording on the letter we're sending out, you're aware of all that. So we're looking forward to that also.
Thing with the new law, councilwoman, is in the good old days, prior to November 1st, if we worked with them and worked with them and worked with them, and they're just avoiding us, and we found them and we wanted to, we could arrest them and put them in the jail and hold them. We can't do that anymore.
Okay.
And usually, once you put cuffs on them and said, you're now going to jail, they went, you're serious about this? They found the money rather than go to jail. But we can't do that anymore, so it took a lot of our leverage away.
You can give them a piece of paper. It says they have 10 days to contact the court clerk.
Yep.
Okay.
The, the other thing I'll say is if somebody has had a change in circumstances, the fact that we sent. Statutory. To get a reduction if they qualify.
And this does not prevent us in the future, if we decide to hire a warrant. But I don't think it's cost-effective. But if we did, we can still do, just like we've been doing. And as this gentleman said, only send them what we want to.
Okay.
So it's our call what they work.
But. Send us.
And we're only here to assist him, the chief and his staff. They tell us how, what they want done. And we'll say, well, this. Y'all, that's what we want, or no, it's not. We're here to assist. We're not here to tell them.
Okay, so just as a city, we're thinking of, since our warrant officer is retiring, this is like a contract labor type of position that will fill in the gap.
Correct.
And we probably don't need a lot of work since we're a small city. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is the 30% fee negotiable? It is kind of high. I mean, we aren't a lot of residents here in Oklahoma.
Yes.
Or in War Acres.
It is negotiable. It can go up to 35%.
Okay, so what's your range?
So it's, it's from 25 to 30%. Most of our contracts are right in that range. Because again, it's not costing you or your, or your office anything at all. It's paid for by the people that ignored your letters and ignored your phone calls. It doesn't cost you anything.
Still our neighbors, though.
So we, yeah, that's where we put a lot of work. We send a couple of, we send at least two letters, and we make a lot of phone calls. We have a phone bank that notifies them. And we do other things with the chief's staff's permission. I know he's retiring, but he'll still be, he'll tell us before the contract goes into effect. If you decide to, if you decide to give us the opportunity to work for you, I think we're asking for a start date of January 1st. So we will go through everything with the chief and his staff and continue to be with him and Mr. Love and make sure everything is done to your benefit. But we work very hard to collect, to collect your fee. But yes, ma'am, that's, that's, it's between 25 and 30%. Could be up to 35. We have clients who are 35%.
Well, we have an opportunity to see this contract?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
It'll be on the December agenda for y'all to look at and give the mayor approval.
Okay.
It was supposed to be on this, but like I said, there was a miscommunication. And since he came for memorial, we didn't want to send him back and ask him to come back in December to, to present.
Okay.
What was your name again?
Brent Sheridan.
Okay, got it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all very much, and we look forward to working with you. Hope you give us the opportunity to show you how good we are. I think we're very good, the best in the business. But my opinion, I'm a little prejudiced, my opinion.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Just have one. Do you hire local skip tracers?
We use, we have people that we work for, work out of our office in Amarillo and Houston. And, and, and we're always looking for people to, that want to go to work. If you have suggestions, please send it to me. You have my card and my email address, my personal phone number. Please give me a call.
Curious how you obtain them. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We have three phone banks that we use. Yes, ma'am.
So mostly a call center?
Yes, ma'am. It's a call center. Like I said, we have one in Amarillo. We have one in Houston. We have one in Dallas-Fort Worth area. And as you know, now you can receive a call from anywhere in the world. So we feel like that's most efficient for us. We have over 60 people working in our call centers, all of them combined. So, yes, ma'am.
Other than Bethany here, are you working with any other cities in Oklahoma?
Yes, ma'am. We work with about 42.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. We have Edmund here. We have, wow, we have Nichols Hills. We have Tulsa. That's, I know that's not right around here. We have, oh, wow, I could give you a whole list because I've just called them all in the last two days asking if they received our email concerning the new law that came into effect and to see if they had any questions. We represent you. We have. Yes, ma'am.
Good job.
I'll say what he can't say or won't say. Part of the reason Purdue is, I, I, I feel like getting more business in Oklahoma is because some of the incumbents that were doing collections for a lot of the cities had contracts but weren't doing a lot of work. But they're, I mean, I'll just use the village as an example. I won't say the company name, but any ticket that we sent to them, the 35% fee was tacked on, and it didn't matter who collected it.
They still got their.
I've been prosecutor there since, God, this is coming up on 10 years, and I had them pull the, pull a report. We had received one check from them for money that they had collected, and we had sent out checks almost every month to them for their fee for us collecting their money. That's why we were very ready to get rid of them, and the, the village vetted several companies and came to Purdue. I wasn't involved in that process, but I was involved in sort of the, what do we want to ask? And so. I worded that way. For them to get paid, they have to do, they have to do the work.
And in the instance of the village, gentleman's your city manager now, came from Kingfisher, would represent Kingfisher, so he's aware of what we can do.
What's your, what's your success rate on collections?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of varies on that. It'd be the age of the ticket, the type of the ticket, where the debtor is from. There's a lot of different things. We strive for 35%, 35 to 40. The standard in this industry is 25%. We strive for 35 to 40% on us. Again, if we don't collect, we don't get paid, so we're working just as hard as we can. But I would like to tell you, promise you, we're going to collect a certain percentage, but I can't do that.
Right.
But we work very, very hard. That's why we're, we're the leaders in the business, I feel like.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, of course.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Take your bag. All right, chief, anything else?
No, sir. Thank you all for letting us do that here.
Wonderful. All right, move on to item number six, final public hearing, discussion of possible action for you subject to review concerning eating or drinking establishments reviewing use of a beer tavern nightclub or bar nightclub or bar, a place of business whose. Distributing beverages. Thank God. 5914 Northwest 36th Street, War Acres, 73122. Applicant, Michael Winnicky. If you'll come up and Planning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
They already knows this, but just because it matters for our ordinance, the applicant is here. How we doing?
What?
All right, well, we need to open up a public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Love, you want the staff to talk first, or you want? Yeah, we have public, or have staff. Go to.
All right, so this is a special use permit for a bar nightclub, but it is a brewery. So we're looking at a different type of noise experience. And so the applicant had this on the October agenda for planning commission. We needed to go back and revise a few things about the site plan and make sure that everything met our ordinances. We got that done. And then in November, he came again to planning commission and was approved unanimously with one person missing. He has all of the appropriate parking spaces, and anything else that we had concerns about are going to be addressed in the building permit stage.
What were some of the concerns?
There was a concern about just the property line and how, and the access to the parking because of the existing dispensary that's right there. And then whether or not his able, or able license would transfer. And let's see.
Dumpster.
What?
When the dumpster was.
Yes, the dumpster. But we.
Have your right-hand man. All right, with that, I'll take a, open up public hearing.
I move.
I move.
I make my show of a public hearing.
Second.
Montaire.
Yes.
Morris.
Yay.
Steele.
Yay.
Myers.
Yay.
Douglas.
Yay.
Meyer.
All right. Anybody from the public like to speak on this?
Do you want the applicant?
Sure.
What he's proposing.
You're, you're fine. Well, brewery of five years in Oklahoma City, I brought it to a close. There was a little issue with ABLE where we opened a taproom that was okay 18 months ago. And all of a sudden, it wasn't because it was separated by a parking lot. It wasn't exactly the same address. So I got kind of shut down on technicality. So I'm looking for a new home. He's got a facility over there off of. Spare building that isn't really being used right now that he'd like to be put to use. A big piece of land that could, you know, piece of property if we put the right time and effort into it. And really just seeing if War Acres would be even.
Are you just going to be serving beer? Okay, is that, put out any odor that would be offensive to any surrounding neighborhoods?
Not at the smallest scale we're going to be doing it at, no.
Okay, I'm not really familiar with the brewing process, but I mean, are there chemicals involved which would be hazardous to the sewer?
Anything that you can't put down the sewer, no. I mean, we would have, for like our farmers to, but as far as like our cleaning chemicals, all that stuff can go right down the.
Not, no hazardous chemicals entering to the sewer system?
No. It wouldn't be anything like that, no. I haven't had any issue with.
Any, are you?
Wait for the public.
So nightclub as well?
That's wording from the ordinance.
Ordinance.
Okay, so just a brewery.
You come before, if you're.
We would only be serving the craft beer products on there. Now, it is connected to a dispensary, and the idea is if someone wanted to buy there, they could go out in the back activity area, the walking trails area that we have proposed, and it'd be like set up a area just for people to kind of enjoy themselves, sort of sack, I guess.
Like a park or something?
Yeah, kind of.
Abels.
I haven't really figured that part out yet.
Okay. So. I have, I have a couple of questions. What's your full legal name?
Charles Michael Winicki III.
Okay. You put on Facebook that Winicki Brewing Company temporary halted operations due to some licensing renewal issues with the City of Oklahoma City and the ABLE Commission. And then you just said that was because of the taproom and, and that. So did ABLE suspend your license?
No, actually, my, my ABLE license is still active right now.
Okay.
I've let my health department license lapse because I knew I wasn't going to be brewing in the facility I'm at anymore. But no, my ABLE license is still active through, I think, May of next year. And then my self-distribution license is active through June of next year.
And your certificate of compliance?
Yep, all been, you know, we're all squared away with Oklahoma City now as far as what was passed due with them.
Okay, well, I'm not worried about Oklahoma City. I'm worried about War Acres, so.
Yeah, I haven't had any compliance with you guys yet.
Okay. And how about your general sales tax permit from the Oklahoma Tax Commission?
Yeah, that's still paid up and active, yeah.
Okay.
Now, the only thing that isn't active right now is the health department license. Like I said, I just let that lapse. I think it lapsed in October.
Is that because you're not serving food anymore?
Yeah, it's, yeah, I've just shut it down. My operation's completely done. I've actually gotten rid of all the products. I think there's maybe one restaurant left with, left.
I think this really sounds like something War Acres could use, you know, just a cool local hangout spot, something that can help gather us and bring us together more than the grocery store, like city council does.
It's a different atmosphere than a bar or nightclub.
What were your hours, Peter?
What I was doing was 3:00 to 10:00, Tuesday through Saturday, or Tuesday through Sunday. Yeah. Or I'm sorry, Wednesday through Sunday. I was closing Monday, Tuesday, so I'm sorry.
Page 70 in the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the idea would be 3:00 to 10:00.
Will you just be brewing beer to be consumed on property, or will you be selling?
I haven't decided if I want to distribute to restaurants again or not. But the focus would be that facility.
And the trails out back, do you have any type of amplification?
No, we're not really looking to make it a party or a rock concert. Now, if we had like a, we want to, we plan on coming in here and getting approval for that. But that would be like every couple of months kind of thing, not a every week thing.
Well, it concerns me with the no, any kind of noise disturbance to the neighborhood.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have any speakers or amplification or anything like that, no. Decide to have some, what we wanted to get together as far as food trucks and live music. Haven't really thought that far ahead on those yet. But so venue I had before was not set up for anything like that, so I never really had the opportunity.
So I'm a little confused on, I drove by the area, and I, is it the one building? Because I saw the one building with the entrance and the exit, and then the two side doors.
Yeah, they are connected, but they're, I mean.
Different addresses.
Yeah, they're, they're different addresses. They're connected, they're separated by them. So one of, the half of the building.
Going to be behind them? That's.
Building behind that in the field, we would end up, like renovating and turning into.
Okay.
I was just there today. What's with the RV in the back in the parking lot?
I don't think that will be there if all this actually goes through. I think his intentions are planning on getting rid of that.
Is that the walking trail?
It's in the.
RVs are right now?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. And that's all fenced in?
Yeah, it's all, a gathering for random projects and construction material.
I went and bought today and went in, actually went in the building, then I talked to Brandon about how many square feet and whatever. And he said he's got 1,100 square feet in the front for the dispensary, and you would have 1,100 square feet in the back where the garage doors are.
That's the idea.
Okay. Yeah.
Plus the brew house.
Plus the what?
Plus the brew house in the back.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay.
I think our main concern is you'll close at 10. If you just had just a brewery, you close at 10, you had your own little garden that people drank beer in, and that was it, to a dispensary. We already have an issue with that exact same thing going on on Northwest Expressway. You say you close at 10, and the back lot would close at 10, but the dispensary doesn't close until 12, correct?
Yeah, that's.
So would there ever be a, oh, the dispensary's open until 12, so we're going to let them hang out? Closed. Or is it going to be something that is locked off that when you close at 10, it's closed off?
Yeah, that would be the idea.
Because we don't want to get in the situation where there's police having to go out there every weekend because there's a, well, it's not the dispensary, it's the brewery having a party. Oh, it's not the brewery having a party, it's the dispensary having a party. And then you can't figure out who's doing what, and nothing's being done about it. So we were already experiencing that problem with one dispensary slash event center slash bar slash restaurant. And this is exactly the same thing, but now it's by apartment complexes and homes on both sides of it. So that's the issue that we're having is that, I don't want to get into, because I've looked at all this stuff that you want to have outside and calling it a beer garden slash dispensary smokeout, whatever, you know, whatever it is. I just don't want it to become, people are going to park in supermarkets, walk across street, have a big party. We can't close it down. And then we have that issue because we allowed it to be done. So that's kind of where I'm at on the subject, so.
I understand your concern. We definitely understand there's some liability and risk involved. Again.
There's also opportunity, though, just to throw it out there. Are you guys connected within the cannabis community at all? I know that there's a lot of festivals and events and things that maybe not even dealing with smoke, but dealing with the product itself and doing farmers markets. Is that something that you guys would be doing community-style events at this walk?
That'd be more of a question for Brandon and the cannabis side.
Is it going to be mostly just for patrons?
No.
Is it going to be mostly just for patrons?
Yeah, basically, I mean, as far as if like they're visiting the dispensary, wanting to come in and have a drink kind of thing, that's kind of my idea. Or if someone's coming in specifically to have a drink with me or my brewery, and they're like, "Oh, hey, I'm going to stop in here on my way home and get something for the house." You know, just kind of a shared.
Well, just because, you know, War Acres has 10,000 residents. So having a large number of people like that move through your facility, like in Oklahoma City, isn't really financially feasible. You would have to throw more parties in order to make revenue. So are you planning on mostly throwing parties or gatherings, or?
No.
How much traffic do you expect to have on a one-off coming through?
Hmm, I mean, to be honest, the brewery industry right now is hurting. A lot of us are closing down. I don't know how much to expect, or if the brewery industry is going to make a comeback, or if this is a bad idea that I'm even thinking about doing or not. I don't really have an honest answer for you on that one. But we wouldn't be relying on parties. I'm not trying to, like I said, make it some party hangout. It would be just looking for a new home and hoping my brewery goes where I wanted it to originally. I would just kind of cut short of it.
Okay, thanks.
Does a brewery use a lot of?
That we're actually, we're looking into, hopefully, maybe restoring. I don't know if that well's still any good or not. But the idea is, the well's right next to the proposed brew house, so ideally, we'd be brewing off a well water.
Is it a Bethany well, or?
It should be War Acres well right there.
Okay, well, because the deed says the land is in Bethany.
Right, the apartments are on Bethany.
Yeah.
And the houses are on War Acres.
That place is Bethany too.
Right. It's right at the zigzag corner of War Acres.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, not on me, but I do.
But I mean, but so ABLE's already approved, okay. That's probably our main concern.
It would be a new application. So I, they can't just transfer the license because it would be new location. I would basically have to go through the whole application process over again.
So you don't have it yet for the new location?
Not for the new location, no. No, for my current location that I just shut down, yeah.
In, in order to engage in the use, he has to get an ABLE license. What he's seeking tonight is the permission to be able to go get the ABLE license. Because if he can't get zoning approval, then the ABLE licenses aren't cheap.
Okay.
Yeah.
To be real blunt, he's going through the process the way you're supposed to go through it, which is deal with zoning first. And there's, you don't want to dump money into construction renovation, getting your licenses, only to find out you can't use the property for that purpose. So what you're supposed to do is get zoning. Then, once you get zoning, if you never go through with the other steps, that'll be it. But that allows you to go to the next step.
We're not actually approving the business until he gets the license.
You're approving the use at the property at that point. His business would go get the required licenses, get the building permits, get the appropriate building plan reviews. This is just about the use.
Yeah, and at that point in time, it's through staff.
Right. And, and what these are, uses, uses on review are uses that the city council has determined are consistent with the zoning district. And the only difference between them and what's called a permitted use is that there are some uses which generally permitted, consistent with the zoning district, but depending on how they're going to be used, could create issues for adjacent properties. In, in this particular case, you're bordered on one side by a commercial and on the other two sides, I think by heavier density residential apartment complex. I think it's R2, or it's either R2 or R3.
Yes, it's R2.
So, I mean, this would be one, you've asked all the right questions about noise, hours of operations, you know, the kind of things that if this were, if he were coming in and he had a lot up on the north side of Northwest Highway where there's just heavier density commercial all around him, it's almost one of those you'd ask, "Why, why is this coming before us?" Well, it's coming before us because there are some lots like this one that do have resident, that border. And so it's a use that you want to take a look at before you just say, "Okay." But the use itself has already been okayed for this district, subject on a one-off basis to an individual review.
Right.
But you're not deciding, should we have, should we have a, is it okay to have a craft brew, brew house and taproom in C3? That decision's already been made, that yes, it is. We just need to look at each individual one to make sure that particular one in that location's okay. But the decision on whether or not that zoning district's okay for it's already been made.
I have a question. I don't know if it's for Dakota area, but has the parking amount required been discussed?
Yeah, so their original plan, if you, and is it still on, it might still be on the plans, on the west side of the property, there's a structure that is, one of his original visions was to have like little cabana areas.
Yeah.
And, and that was part of, and to his credit, he, he came into the planning commission with a loose idea of what he wanted to do, and parking became the big primary concern because when you, Dakota had to do the math there, the brew house part of it requires less parking than the taproom part than the cabanas. And so she calculated the number of parking spaces, and it was well over what was available. So he scrapped that part of it. So it's just now the taproom and the brew house, which between the dispensary, the taproom, and the brew house that are ample parking spaces.
Okay.
Well, ample room for parking spaces. There'll have to be some stripey in the parking lot to identify the particular spaces.
From the other situation?
And, and if he decided, you know, two years from now, okay, I'm going to have a, you know, enclosed, big outdoor seating area, well, that would change the parking requirements. But as, as he's got it laid out right now, ample parking.
Okay.
Will there be any food served?
We wouldn't be doing food ourselves. It would be if food trucks kind of deal, if we called them in, kind of the same deal, if we wanted to set up a vent, that's what would, kind of go hand in hand with setting them a vent. If we did any type of music, we probably wouldn't want food. How often food trucks, depends on the business, how much we're able to afford it. They're not cheap.
True statement.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Montaire.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Steele.
Yes.
Prince.
Yay.
Morris.
Yay.
Douglas.
Yay.
Tribby.
Yay.
Meyer.
Yay.
I want to briefly address the issue on the deed with it saying Bethany. The legal description is the west 164 and a half feet, and the east 314 and a half feet, Block 4 of Fruitland Gardens, Fruitland Gardens addition to Bethany, Oklahoma. Was platted, War Acres didn't exist. And so it is because Bethany, which is in War Acres.
But it's ours.
But, but, but if they put War Acres on there, it would not be a proper legal description because that is the name of the platte at the time it was platted back a long, long time ago.
Before the 1940s.
I was just curious why, and if there were, if it was, it used to be part of Bethany, was the well part of Bethany, or was it?
Telltale sign here is there's no lot number. They platted this area. Actually, when I looked it up at the planning commission meeting, some of the blocks in Fruitland Gardens, and you describe your property by feet.
Original.
That's why it says Bethany.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use subject to review concerning eating or drinking establishments for 5914 Northwest 36th War.
Do you have a second?
I second it.
Thank you.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Morris.
Yay.
Yay.
Prince.
Yay.
Douglas.
Abstain.
Montaire.
Yay.
Myers.
Yay.
Tribby. Meyer.
Yay.
Mission approved.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking. All right, item number seven, final public hearing, discussion of possible action on the use subject to review, 5926 Northwest 39th Street, 73122. And to open up a public hearing.
And to open up a public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Myers?
Yes.
Steele?
Yes.
There you go.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Truby?
Yay.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mission approved.
And the applicant is here. I got you.
Hello, everyone.
Thank you for being here.
Uh, yes, real quick, Dakota.
Okay. Um, okay, so this is a special use permit application for a used auto dealership. It's on Northwest 39th. It is zoned C5. The property is also zoned C5. Presently, the building on the premises is a pawn shop. It entered into a showroom. And there was an issue again brought up about the dumpster situation, but I think they were waiting to decide what they were going to do about that. So other than that, I don't have anything.
One, one thing I'll add, because it did come up at planning commission, it may, you may have a question. Uh, one of the questions in the zoning district is there's a separate approval that'd be required if there's going to be actual work done on cars, auto repair, bodywork. They're not requesting permission to do that. This would strictly be for sales.
So no maintenance of any kind, not even changing wiper blades or, I mean, what's the order line?
No mechanical. On property, we're going to basically remodel it and lease it out. And, uh, we do fix them upright. We spent a lot of money on them. And we did the same, uh, two years ago, we did come out here and we did a similar thing to 5932, the old salvage yard.
Okay. What's that address?
Uh, 5932 Northwest 39th.
Okay.
It used to be an old.
No, because she doesn't, we couldn't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I remember.
There was a lot of work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was terrible before, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we want, we, we will make sure there is no mechanical work whatsoever, you know, we, we, we against that ourselves.
Uh, go ahead and just kind of tell us exactly if there's anything additional. Would you like to let us know?
Uh, nothing, you know, special. We're just going to do some remodeling, you know, maybe add two garage doors. Uh, the front portion of it, we're going to use it as a showroom. The back portion, they can do, you know, use it as detailing, you know, detail their cars and stuff. Uh, not, uh.
How much? Parking spaces? For cars?
28 parkings.
Oh, that's for the cars, okay.
Cars, yeah, and five parkings for the, no.
Oh, okay.
What's next door?
We're going to list this out. I own Melrose Auto down the street.
Okay.
39th and if you guys don't. Really nice, you know, we spent a lot of money there too.
That's been around a while.
Yeah, I've been there for over, I would say close to 10 years now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just an investment property, yeah.
Any other questions?
Do we know? That for. A lot.
Not even.
But no tax. We, we don't make money on a business license fee, it's to recruit cost.
So I mean, that's what you have to think about, all Northwest 39th becoming his car. The city makes no money off of like that prime real estate. That's my only comment about it.
It all goes to the state.
Are you go, are you going to deal with indirect lending or are you going to be another buy? Are you going to deal with indirect lending or are you going to be a buy here, pay here dealership?
I'm not going to be operating there. I'm going to lease it out. So I, I'm not sure what's their plan. Maybe it could be in-house financing or they could be going to, you know.
Cause I know that your location off Melrose is.
I personally do in-house financing.
In-house financing, right.
Yes, sir. Now Northwest 39th is very popular for, you know, other dealerships. And the reason we are here is, you know, is just, it's known for. Now, once we change the zoning, you know, we, we're going to put it out for lease. It might be for something else, you know, some, somebody else might, may come in and say, you know, we want to do something.
Gotcha. Well, that's our hope. Any other questions, comments? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
Steele?
Nay.
Myers?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Truby?
Yay.
Sorry. Prince? Douglas?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Schmidt?
So it was the last comment that was made, um.
It's just the public hearing.
Oh, closing the public hearing.
Yeah.
I don't know, but I'm still discussing, so.
But you're involved, so.
I'll say, yes, yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Then I'll say it.
Now we can have.
Okay, the last comment, so you're coming for us to say you want to open this up as like a used dealer store, but then your last comment was, or it could be something else if we get it zoned that way. So is there a possibility that it could be something else auto, other than an auto dealership? Or is that mainly what it's going to be?
So we have a property on Northwest 38 as well, that we put it out for lease. Uh, someone from Texas, he decided to come lease it for a cleaning company, you know. And so at that point, it, it doesn't really matter to us, you know. For the, as long as the rent is there, you know, we, we will rent it, you know. So if it's an auto dealership, but most likely 90%, it will be auto dealership, yeah.
I mean, that affects our votes. I mean, do you, you vote on somebody that's going to give. Are you going to approve something that you're going to get revenue? And so especially on Northwest 39th, it was a pawn shop. It's not like it was a car dealership and it's going to be a car dealership. This was something that we were receiving money from and now we're not. So, I mean, that's, and I don't know if I could really vote on something if I don't know what it's going to be. So I don't know how that works.
How long, how long has it been since the pawn shop closed? Do we know?
Couple of months.
Or just a couple of months?
Yeah, I think it was at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, it's been a while.
I mean, it's conceivable that a pawn shop could come rent it from you.
Possibly.
Though making it what it's going to be, most likely it will be a car dealership, yeah.
That's what we're planning on, you know.
Right. Are you looking up something we need to know?
No, my, my only comment would be the same as the last comment, which is you've already made the determination that car dealerships are appropriate for this zoning district. The only issue is that they might be adjacent to properties, that their operation, depending on how they were going to operate, could cause disruption, adverse impact on neighboring properties. This is one of these situations where the zoning surrounding the property is all heavy, heavy density commercial. You don't have residential nearby, so that's the reason that comes back before you. But the concern about whether or not this property should be used for non-sales tax generating activity is not before you. That decision's already been made decades ago when the zoning ordinances were adopted and applied to this property.
Do you have any other questions?
Is it too late to ask you, like, do you know how long your renovation will take?
Forty-five days, maybe two months.
That's pretty fast.
Somebody provide a motion?
I move we approve the, um, the use subject review for the possible auto dealership used car location at 5926 Northwest 39th Street in War Acres.
I'll second that.
Morris?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yay.
Douglas?
Nay.
Truby?
Nay.
Prince?
Yay.
Steele?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Is it coming down to me? I'm going to say yay.
You're the last one before the mayor.
I'll make the mayor make the decision, I'm saying.
I'm sorry, what did you end up saying?
Yeah, yay.
Okay.
And.
Mayor.
I'm going to say nay, but it will still be approved. Yeah, it's still going to be approved.
Motion approved.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Well, thank you everyone, happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
Appreciate you too, thank you. All right, discussion of possible action to appoint David Davis to serve as the alternate legal counsel to the Workers Board of Adjustment in the event the board's legal counsel has legal conflict.
Historically, the city prosecutor served as legal counsel to the Board of Adjustment, which realizing that we have a lot of new council members, you may not know what a Board of Adjustment is. Board of Adjustment exists to hear appeals essentially on zoning issues. Uh, the primary purpose of the Board of Adjustment is you've got zoning codes. Occasionally, there's a hardship that's created, usually because of a particular shape of property, whatever it may be, that a person can apply to get what's called a variance from a particular one or more requirements of the zoning code. This would be, the law says thou must meet these requirements. I can't meet this requirement, but I think I qualify for a variance. And so I'm going to ask the Board of Adjustment to make a one-off exception for me. So the BOA hears those appeals. Whatever the BOA says goes, if they grant a variance, it's granted. If they deny it, it's denied. Any interest. You, it goes. Occasionally, the city has to sue itself. If the BOA grants a variance that is, we feel is inappropriate, then we can sue our own Board of Adjustment and.
Interesting.
Guess we can.
Longtime prosecutor, way back in the day, was the, I think, last full-time city attorney. Uh, and Luke is now the judge and our current prosecutor can serve as legal counsel to the BOA, except we have a particular application where the prosecutor is prosecuting the applicant for a criminal violation, alleged criminal violation, and feels that he. And the board may have heard David Davis's name, Roger certainly has. David is a long, long, long time city attorney, served Bethany for decades, served several other communities. Piedmont, Cashin. City attorney in. The attorney. I have a zoning legal question, David's the one I call.
He's the.
He's that guy. Uh, I put a list of cases in the memo. Almost all of those are land use and zoning issue cases that help define the law that we all live by today. So, uh, realizing we had a conflict and we needed to get a hearing set, I reached out to David and asked if he'd be willing to serve and predictably he said yes and quoted me a rate that's probably about a third of what he could be charging. But, but it's because that's who he is. So anyways, my recommendation would be to approve David so that he could serve as our backup legal counsel for those weird instances where we actually have to have a BOA hearing. Prosecutors prosecuting the person who's applying, uh, would be good to have somebody else giving them advice. Otherwise, the prosecutor would continue to do it.
And no, we need to have a Board of Adjustment meeting, so we probably need to get this done. One way or the other.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve David Davis as the alternate legal counsel? I'll second that.
Prince?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Myers? Steele?
Yay.
Truby?
Yay.
Schmidt?
Yay.
I'm so sorry, Morris?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mission approved. It's like when it hits, I can't quit. Can't stop.
All right, uh, item number nine, discussion of possible action for resolution number 580, authorizing O-MAG to apply escrow account funds in the amount of 72,877 cents to the workers' compensation premium. Yeah?
And I do ask this every year. Every year they will give us so much money back from previous years that they didn't have to spend.
Oh.
So I always ask that it gets put towards our workers' comp for the next year. But I have to have your approval to do that.
You, you could get a check and then write a check or.
Just give it back. Go ahead, Debbie. Do it.
I move we approve the action.
I'm still not sure how to do that.
I move we approve the action to resolution number 580, authorizing O-MAG to apply escrow account funds in the amount of 72,080.77 cents to the workers' compensation policy premium.
I'll second it.
Morris?
Yay.
Oh my goodness, Douglas?
Yay.
Steele?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Truby?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Schmidt?
Did you hear us whispering? Cause I was trying to get you to, since you were so intrigued on it, we wanted you to make the motion. Did you hear us?
Me?
Yeah, me and Roger were like.
I felt your eyes piercing me.
Now we were whispering, we both whispered for you to make the motion, so. But I say yes.
Mayor.
So she really didn't hear.
All right, she felt the fourth. All right. And annual. Oh my God, annual storm report, uh, chairman?
On the page 89 and 90 is a brief overview of the stormwater pollution program. The city was, uh, War Acres was required to participate in 2005. There's been three iterations of the permit since then required by the DEQ. There is six minimum control measures. This is a public outreach. They want to educate the public to minimize pollutants into the stormwater. Construction activities are considered a major contributor such as silting, trash, those sort of things. Uh, we have a street sweeper that covers, uh, goes through all the streets at least once a year. Usually we make twice a year. We clean, uh, storm grates after every major rain event, so we're trying to keep the pollutants out of the waterways. We're a little bit behind on our current report this year, but we're working with the consultants to get that turned in by December 1st. And so that will get us into compliance for, uh, our report for 2022. If there's any questions, we could go on forever.
So we're in compliance, pretty much?
Uh, there, there's basically, uh, in the stormwater plan, there's, uh, you make comments like, say, for instant street, street sweeping programs. So we submit a list of all the streets that we, uh, swept and how many tons of debris or volume, volumetric. For instance, we also have brochures out in the front of city hall. We're supposed to count those and see how many. Like, uh, fertilizing your yard, picking up pet waste, um, um, construction, if you're building something.
Thank you.
You mentioned the grates. Sometime, I mean, they get packed with leaves and stuff like that. Do you, is that, you guys flushing those out or is that part of the plan?
I'm sorry, yes, our street sweeper has, it actually has a suction tube on it. I'm trying to get it, get to the point where we can actually break the grates off and then actually use that tool to try to suck out some of the storm, storm basin. So you've probably seen some weeds and some, but it's on the list to get done.
I've seen some in Oklahoma City where trees are growing out.
That's pretty much it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Uh, item number 11, discussion of possible action to authorize the Public Works Director to purchase a Snow Way, uh, salt spreader, uh, for $7,200 and installed for 1518. For a total budget of 18, or 8718, uh, budgeted from CIP for 10,000. Chairman?
So, uh, basically it is a salt spreader that goes in the back of a pickup truck. Currently, we have two tandem dump trucks with electric salt spreaders. Those are really hard to maneuver, like with the new police station, they have an area behind that's fenced. It'd be hard to maneuver that there, here at city hall and also at the fire department. So this is probably an easier way to, uh, dispense the salt. It's in a four-wheel drive, uh, Ram type pickup. They'll install wiring for controlling the electric motors to distribute and auger the salt. And this is on state. SWO five hundred ALT double oh forty-seven.
The salt hard on our streets? I mean, does it cause corrosion or?
Yes.
Issues that have to be repaired later?
Yes.
I don't, I mean.
It basically, basically, the, the application of salt is to try to minimize the bonding of the, or freezing of the water to the surface. So this lowers the freezing point to about twelve to fifteen degrees. So yes, it does get off into the stormwater. That's part of the street sweeping program. They, they want us to try to sweep after a snow event if possible, to try to recollect some of that salt distributed.
That's always been my point of contention with the way the city has operated, Oklahoma City that is. They spread a lot of salt, and then they had to go back and fix the streets following spring, you know? It caused a lot of damage.
It, it, it can. The, the, the crack sealing that we did in your area, that helps to minimize the penetration of the solution to the cracks, which gets into the base of the pavement, which is, you know, a quicker failure rate.
Yeah, but, I mean, you've still gotta have it, I mean, we gotta have our streets cleared, so it's.
Right. And, and that's what it's trying to do. You're trying to, you're trying to lower that freezing point so you don't have as much slipping and sliding accidents.
Do we ever use sand?
We do. We mix, we mix salt and sand, so we mix, depending on, if it gets below freezing, we'll use, below the freezing point of the salt, we'll try to use more sand with a little bit of salt. If it's, if we see the temperatures are gonna be above in the fifteen degrees, we'll, we'll definitely use the salt.
You said we had two other pieces of equipment, but. For spaces. In the police department.
Yes.
And city hall, yeah.
And city, so just, it's mainly for those three specific areas?
Yes.
Is there a reason why we can't? Why we have to buy a whole piece of equipment, not some sort of attachment? Or will this have other functions to it, working in the neighborhoods? Cause I know, like, sometimes the neighborhoods don't get salted. Is that?
Well, we typically focus on the major streets. So we try to calculate based on the lane miles of streets, of the major streets. Obviously, we're not gonna be able to do, we have some hilly areas like over towards Twin Lakes to the west that we try to salt. And sometimes, if you have cars that are double parked in those areas, it's really hard because the plow is usually on the truck. So it's a, a pretty wide blade. So it can be problematic trying to maneuver on slick surfaces between cars parked on both sides of the road.
You can demonstrate.
We could utilize that there in tighter areas and areas that we know that are sloped where we need to throw salt.
Okay, thanks.
So it's basically gonna be used in, in narrower areas?
Correct.
In what?
Narrow areas.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, our current, current trucks are tandem dump trucks, and they usually have the plow on the front. So they're, they're pretty wide, so, and they're hard to maneuver.
And we have two of those.
We have two of those.
And is this equipment just gonna go on an already existing vehicle?
Yes, it's, a, a street department has a Ram twenty-five hundred, three-quarter ton, four-wheel drive. It'll just basically be slid into the bed and ratcheted down. When we're not using it, we'll clean it up and store it.
That's gonna be my question. So it's something that could be removed so the truck can be used in the summer and everything else, right?
Right, right.
Okay. So every year, we're gonna have to pay to get it installed back every year?
Now, now, this is just for the wiring. It's electrically driven. So they're gonna hook a harness up from, from the unit underneath the body up to the battery, then back through the dashboard, there's a controlled, a control box that controls the on, off and the spinning rate of the auger.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
This is a new unit, right?
This is a new unit.
Any other questions? Take motion?
I'll make a.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the public works department to purchase a Snow Way salt spreader and have it installed for a total cost of eight thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars.
I'll second that.
Myers.
Yay.
Buntheir.
Yay.
Tribby.
Yay.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Douglas.
Yay.
Prince.
Yay.
Morris.
Yay.
Yay.
Mayor.
Yay. And Chairman, thank you for always going above and beyond to save us money everywhere you can. Thank you for that. Alright, item number twelve, discussion of possible action on reappointing Doug Johnson, Ward Three, Butch Davis at large, John Downs at large, to the planning commission. And I don't think any of them are here, so.
Well, I have a question.
Suckers.
Are we gonna do these individually or grump lump together?
If you're gonna make the motion, I guess you can choose.
And why are we reappointing? What's the deal?
Well, you could not appoint one. If you don't wanna appoint one.
So technically Doug needs to, there needs to be a nomination from one of the two Ward Threes. The two at larges are nominated by the mayor. Same thing on the BOA, board of adjustment.
We can do it individually then.
Ready?
Hang on.
For Ward Three.
We have enough papers.
We've had him on many times that way. So I didn't take, change it.
And they don't have to be.
Man, let me make sure I got enough pages.
Well, a, a, and, and I'll say, a nomination is all that's needed. There can be a motion to approve all three. It's just that the mayor, the way, planning commission has seven seats, four ward seats that are nominated by ward council members, three at large, they're nominated by the mayor. There's nothing to stop, except in a situation where you might have two people nominated from the same ward for one seat. There's nothing to stop if there's only one nomination from the ward and there's.
What if you want one and don't want the other?
Then you're gonna vote no.
Vote no on all three?
Then you would, well, you would vote no on a combined motion, but it would still be on the table to have individual, the individual nominations. So i- if there's one that you're opposed to, then ask as a matter of privilege that they be not, that there be votes separately on each seat.
I would ask that they be voted on separately.
I'll second that.
They need to be present?
Who do you wanna vote on first?
Do, do we have to motion that and approve it?
Somebody could still say, I don't care, I'm gonna make motion to approve all three.
They don't need to be present?
But we all get along now.
Respect for one another, I would recommend against.
For reappointing. It's not a nomination of somebody. We're reappointing a person that's already there, so.
It's a new term, a, and so the incumbent, the, let me ask, since we do have a ward seat on here.
One of you two, yeah.
Can we do Butch and John together since they're both at large, or they both need to be separate?
I think that's probably why.
Let's just do them all separate.
Do either of you want to nominate Doug or somebody else for Ward Three?
I will make the nomination to reappoint Doug Johnson, Ward Three, as part of the planning commission.
He is our chairman.
And I will second that.
Good, since it comes both from Ward Three.
You're gonna fight for it.
Morris.
Yay.
Ward Three's got it. Steele.
Uh, yes.
Prince.
Yay.
Douglas.
Yay.
Buntheir.
Yay.
Myers.
Yay.
Tribby.
Yay.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Mayor.
Yay.
Motion approved.
At-large seat number one listed for, as Butch Davis's, as the expiring incumbent. Mayor, it's your nomination.
I make a motion to approve Butch Davis for at-large planning commissioner. That means we need a second.
I second it.
That would be least voted on, right?
Godwin.
Yay.
Sorry, Mayor.
Yay.
Morris.
Yay.
Steele.
Yay.
Buntheir.
Yay.
Myers.
Yay.
Douglas.
Abstain.
What's with this abstaining thing?
Prince.
Yay.
Tribby.
He said yay.
He said yay.
Why are you not using your mic tonight?
Your mic is not near your mic.
Yay?
Veronica's gonna get you, dude. I don't know.
No.
Motion approved.
Mr. Mayor, second at-large seat, current expiring incumbent is John Downs.
I make a motion to approve John Downs for the at-large planning commission.
I'll second that.
Did you second it?
I did.
Prince did.
Mayor.
Yay.
Prince.
Yay.
Morris.
Yay.
Douglas.
Yay.
Myers.
Yay.
Buntheir.
Yay.
Steele.
Yay.
Tribby.
Yay.
Schmidt.
No.
Approved.
Alright, item number thirteen, discussion of possible action on reappointing Frank Koller, Ward One, Barry Curl at large to board of adjustment. And I will tell you that this is a place where I need united fronts on this side to find other BOAs.
Yeah, we've, we, it's a five-member board, and we've got, with this, I believe, three.
We need, uh, Ward Four.
We have two vacancies.
Four, we need one, and Ward Three, we need one.
Oh, okay.
So we need all three to show up, and we barely have a quorum.
So you are tasked.
Okay.
Alright. So I'll take a motion from Ward One. For reappointment, if you so wish.
Don't even know the person.
I understand.
Alright, I'll make a motion to reappoint Frank Horner as the Ward One Board of Adjustment representative.
I'll second that.
Myers.
Yay.
Buntheir.
Yay.
Tribby.
Yay.
Schmidt. Douglas. Steele.
Yay.
Morris. Mayor.
Yay.
Alright. Motion for Barry Curl at large Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Each two of Myers.
Mayor.
Yay.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Tribby.
Yay.
Myers.
Yay.
Buntheir.
Yay.
Douglas.
Yay.
Prince.
Yay.
Morris.
Yay.
Steele.
Yay.
Motion approved.
I was just excited to get to make motions tonight. Doesn't happen very often. Item number fourteen, formal. For budgets and announce the December. As public hearing. Don't know if you all had a chance to look over. We had a budget committee that had met and. Talking and discussing, cutting. And don't know if you guys have any other questions. There is a, a place in red that deals with ambulance service. And next month, before we approve the budget, we're going to have to make a vote, have a discussion about what that contract's gonna be, so that we are not in the red.
The ambulance service?
With the ambulance service. Yeah, Patford.
I already had some.
And I know Chief Coy has given them glowing reviews for just their service and taking care of them. Bethany has them, Yukon has them, we do, Edmond, I think, as well. So, and everybody's having increases, by the way, so. Was there somebody else, Coy, besides?
Hey, from Uzum, two times. They're great.
Oh, yeah, alright.
They are great, but are there other options out there?
IMSA, but they're really, really slow and terrible.
That's the only two?
There are others. When Dell City and Edmund went out for bids, other companies showed up. So, yeah, there are other companies out there, and I couldn't begin to tell you what their cost would, or what their contract would look like. I'm not sure.
I met someone, or Vicky and I did, at the conference. So is it too late for you to talk to other companies, or it's pretty much a done deal, or what?
We, we need a contract for January one. Oftentimes, if you're looking at, like with IMSA, we, we knew we might stay with them, but had reasons to shop around, and so many months before the budget year, shopped around, found a replacement, and so that it can be ready for approval in advance of the budget.
This one was called Mercy, and they were out of Tulsa, and they were trying to get business in central Oklahoma and to start up here, so maybe later, next year or something.
Yeah. It's always good to have the discussion.
Yeah.
So is there anything, any glowing concerns with anything in the budget anybody came across? Is that the right question to ask?
I always have questions about the, the director, Chairman, mind if I address this, but the, the sanitation laborers. Just hard to find actual employees for those positions?
Yes. Back in two thousand and ten, I think it started in two thousand with Mayor Woods. He started a temp, temporary labor for the carriers. The wage is somewhere around twelve seventy-six an hour, so it's very difficult to get a permanent employee to pick up trash. I think we have three right now.
Permanent?
Yeah, three, but we really run about six, generally two per truck or three per truck. If an opening comes up in the street department, they generally wanna transfer out of picking up trash, which you can't blame them. So also with the CDL drivers, after the post-COVID, the rate per hour has gone up probably three to four, five dollars an hour. So it's very difficult to get a CDL driver. And it's kind of a different environment, you know, it's a sop and go instead of, you know, a delivery or that sort of thing. So there's not a lot of people really wanting to do the job, so.
Okay. I just wanted your feedback on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, you know, one of the things that we're gonna be addressing later on, in, inside the budget, we're looking at getting a side, side pickup, or side tilted, side tilt, I don't know what it's called.
Side loader.
Yeah, side loader for changing to. Polycarts.
Yay!
Oh, no.
That's a process.
Helen, what are you doing?
But, you know, we're, we're spending a good one hundred and twenty to one hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year for temps.
Right, it's like twenty thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
What the heck?
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we have a dedicated budget for those employees? Why would we keep using temps though?
Because we can't find people. Nobody wants to work the job.
That's what my question was.
And they've also been a big liability as well, so.
You've got the money to hire staff, but if you can't hire them, somebody has to do the work. So you're using temps until you can hire staff, which is using temps until you can hire staff. That's pretty much it.
Yeah, but it seems like every month, that temporary labor's on the expenses or whatever.
It is, every single month.
So are you talking, are you talking about going to side loaders the coming year?
Uh, it'd be about a two-year process.
Two year.
Between getting the trucks, between getting the polycarts, due to budget stuff, to move it over. And we wouldn't lose any actual employees. They would either get transferred over or there's people that aren't even working because of long-term disability and stuff, right?
That is a concern of some of the citizens when the former mayor allowed. On the topic. I was like, why? Anyway. It's good to know there wouldn't be any loss of employees.
Right.
Well, they're, have you thought ahead of if there's a, a choice in the size of the polycart? Cause some of the citizens were concerned of being too big. They couldn't move it to the curb.
I've just heard don't get the light ones because they get destroyed fast.
And blow away.
Blow away, that's true.
So.
Can't be any worse than the trash bags on the curb, excuse me.
But we're not gonna get the green recycling, right? We just, just the blue.
Yeah, well, those are discussions for, for later.
Okay.
But, yeah, there's a whole thing with recycling just in general.
And just know, we'll spend many meetings and many hours just about garbage, because we've done this. How many times? Probably ten, twelve times, yeah. And since two thousand and seventeen, I can think about ten meetings that we spent just on garbage, so. And recycling and everything else, so.
It's important.
Yep, it is.
It never goes away.
So get ready, cause it's coming.
We wanna get rid of them.
December twelfth, we have a special.
December twelfth, we have to approve the budget, correct?
The public hearing.
The public, the public hearing, and then we'll, and then we'll do the approval at the next city council. And we're, we're still open on discussion in between now and then for, for things on the budget. We already cut, I think, four hundred and fifty thousand out of general fund and then over one point six million out of the CIP. So.
That's good to know, considering some things are coming up that people will be telling us about.
Yes, so just let them know we've got about two million dollars out of our budget. Alright, any other conversation over at this point in time? All right, any other, uh, conversation over at this point in time? Oh, okay. Um, that's just letting everybody know, right? No, no motion or anything? All right.
This is the, before we have the pu- the public hearing, you want the budget to be this is the because you don't want to be doing it at the meeting where you're trying to approve it, cause it has to be approved, what, Pam, seven days before?
When does that have to be done?
The public hearing, but then the final vote on the budget is no later.
You have to have it approved seven days before the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Which usually happens at the public hearing.
Yeah, it usually happens at the public hearing, but you don't want, the, the seventh day before the beginning of the fiscal year is December twenty-fourth, or, no, that's November, is December twenty-fifth, so you don't want to wait till then.
Right, exactly.
So if there, if you have concerns about the budgets, you, you, you think that there's something that prevent you from voting for it.
It can be approved at the public hearing or it can be approved at the council meeting in that month. But it needs to be done before the twenty.
Yes, right, so it's sort of speak now or forever, hold your peace, even though you're council member, so you don't ever have to hold your peace, you can.
Unless somebody comes up with something miraculous or some major changes.
Right.
It's basically.
If there's a revenue stream that Pam missed, uh, please let her know, cause it would be nice, right?
Yeah, let me ask you.
There's.
I had a question.
Yeah.
For Pam, on the, on the weed tax, how, how, what percentage do we get out of that?
That is not weed tax. That is cutting nuisance, that is.
Oh, okay.
And I was gonna change the name of that and I.
We talked about that last year. We talked about changing that last year.
Same discussion, Mr. Von Thayer came in and saw me over a year ago and he's like, so how much should we get? And I said, what? And I, all of a sudden, I was like, oh my gosh, because that didn't used to be a thing. It's always been a weed tax, so when people paid their, for their nuisances and their property being cleaned up.
Okay.
It's a weed tax, not a marijuana tax.
Right.
Not weed.
Not a ganja tax.
I need to change that idea.
Well, and, and I'll tell you a- as well, so I think it was approved this last year, or it's something we're gonna be, work on, but so whenever properties go to the tax auction, um, they'll have weed tax, they'll have nuisance tax, you know, cleanup and all that stuff. Well, the cities were never given that money back. And that's either went through or it's going through this next legislative session to where the county treasurer does not get to keep our money.
All they cared about was getting the back taxes paid.
So they're gonna get it to us now?
Yeah, now that's all they get.
Okay.
Cities actually get back that other money that we've gone out.
So do we get any money from, uh, marijuana? Do we get a percentage of the taxes?
Sales tax.
In with our sales tax.
It's not like a special.
It's not.
The state has a sin tax for it on top of sales tax. Cities, it's just sales tax. It's kinda like alcohol. You've got a sin tax on top of sales tax.
Uh-huh, okay.
Sin, yeah.
That's what they are.
Want cigarettes, alcohol?
I mean, it's not what they're called in the statutes, but that's what they, they, they are. We don't, we don't like tobacco, so we're gonna have extra tax. We don't like alcohol, we're gonna have, we don't, marijuana, we're gonna have extra tax. So it's just a way to get extra tax revenue for the state, but cities don't have a special.
Gotcha. All right, any, any other questions on that real quick? Okay, you're welcome to meet with me, I meet with Pam, if you guys have any specific things, look, come, start combing through that budget. I was on flights and I was looking through it again. So before we go to, uh, questions and comments, I'd like to have Lysia for our twenty-three. This is for Ms. Watermala.
You made it through the whole meeting.
Whole meeting. First official meeting, so, um, again, just thank you ladies so much for all the work that y'all did. I got to meet y'all last year and I know all the things you do. So, yeah, we just wanted to appreciate you for being here and doing all the things you did last year and I really appreciate it. Here's a, uh, for you, Adeline. All right, thank you so much, Pam. Thank you all so very much, really appreciate it. Yeah, and we'll do that after. Yeah, so Joan, go ahead and have a seat and then, uh, pictures afterward. All right, questions and comments. I know, uh, Von Thayer's still taking care of his bride, so, uh, he needed to leave, so we'll go ahead and start with Prince.
City employees for all the good work they do and thanks for the street repair crew passed all the cracks in Hammond Street. Like, they did a great job.
Yeah, forty-six.
It really, really needed it. I think we ought to send Bethany a bill for patching her side of the street.
Absolutely.
They did a good job. Really appreciate it, thank you.
Myers? Pam said you have to keep it short.
Sorry, it's not gonna be that short.
It's seven thirty-six right now.
What can we do? We even had an incident where we had one house had so many cars and that's the house that actually had a fire, the cars in their garage. And they're throwing cars here, there and left and right in order for the fire trucks couldn't get down the street. Um, there's so many cars on this street. Between two houses, there's probably ten cars. And it was one of the houses that has the most cars that had the fire, right?
Seventy-first.
Um, so there, not only are these people jeopardizing everybody around them, because if that fire hadn't been contained so fast by our fire department, it could catch the other houses on fire. And can we, I looked through the ordinance, I didn't see anything about number of cars for a resident. Is there anything that we can, can we write in ordinance? I'd be happy to take that on. I know we've had a, the police chief and code has come in to help because this one house that had the fire also had them up in the yard. Um, and I think they're even in the backyard too. I'm not sure. They were at one time. But it's a concern. I mean, you can't get down, if they had to get down that street with emergency equipment, it's hard to do. If they had to get down the street with icing or, or sand or, I'm, I would even assume that the garbage truck going down that street is an issue.
Well, double parking, I know, has been an issue whenever, even the fire, the last fire that I went to, uh, right off of Sixty-third. You know, I mean, I don't know if that's a traffic commission conversation. I mean, I imagine probably. I mean, my one side is fire lane, so nobody's supposed to park on it. To keep from double parking. Chief, just smiling.
Similar complaint several years back from a former planning commissioner who was so frustrated by it, she sold her house, moved out of town because of it. I know of no legal way you can tell people you can only have so many cars. Uh, if we post one side as a fire lane, they're all gonna try and park on the other side. That's kinda where we're at. Um, we have certain areas that we have fire lanes because the chief requires it because if there's parking on both sides, he literally cannot maneuver his equipment in there.
Well, I think that was the incident that night of that fire, that they were putting cars in other people's driveways in order to make room for these guys to get in to address the fire.
Yeah, uh, it wasn't even, it was Oklahoma City that actually went to it because we didn't get notified.
Right, oh, that was another issue, but, yeah.
I mean, you can, we can designate one side a fire lane, they're just gonna park on the other side. And that's just gonna make everybody that lives on that side real happy.
Right. Well, I would like to see code enforcement and, and you have been terrific in getting people over there and getting these people. I mean, granted, when the complaint came in to me, it, I told them, I said, they're coming off this, they're coming off the yard and they're going into the street, which is the biggest complaint that the street has.
Now, if they're street, they gotta move every seventy-two hours.
Every seventy-two?
Yeah, they have to move every seventy-two hours, otherwise they're in violation of parking ordinance and they can be impounded, but.
Okay.
Driven out of.
Just because when we do a complaint on one that's not moving, we'll, not necessarily chalk it, cause the Supreme Court kinda had an issue with that several years ago, but we'll, we'll, we'll pay close attention to it, that we know where it was and see if it's moved at all. But, yeah, I mean, if they move it forward five feet, it's moved for that purpose.
The other thing that I wanted to bring up was we have these businesses that are operating illegally. One in Point was one that came to us to the planning commission. They were told everything they were doing was in violation of the city ordinances. And they ghosted the council and they're continuing to do what they're doing.
What, what are they doing?
Uh, they're, it's a, it's a house on MacArthur that has, they rent the house out, they own the whole thing, the people live in Yukon, they have the backyard where they're storing all their lawn equipment, lawn, it's a lawn service business. Um, and they own the house and the property, but they're renting the house out to the, somebody else, they're not living there, and they have all this equipment going back there. They, we told them at the planning commission that they were in violation of every ord, everything they were doing was in violation of what we allow. And yet they're continuing to do it, they never came to the council and they continue to do what they're doing.
Are you saying they operate a lawn care business outside of the house? It's not actually a house, it's a bit?
In the backyard.
What, what it is, is, uh, in residential, residenials for residential, you, you live there, you reside there, you don't run businesses there. But we do have an exception for what's called a home occupation. And there's two kinds, there's the kind that you just do it at home, customers don't come there, you don't advertise, like, you know, if you, you were an accountant and you did the work at home, then went and met with customers at their place, but they never came to you and everything was inside the home, you can just do that. If there's going to be anything outside the home, then it's something that comes on for review. The requirement for home occupation is that the person that is working the home occupation has to reside at the property. So when they were caught in, in violation of the ordinance, they applied for home occupation, well, they weren't eligible because they didn't, they may have owned the property, but they didn't live there, so essentially they've got the front part of the property that fronts the street is, is the residence and is rented out. And then, as I recall, they had a little drive to the back that then the back half of the property they were using for storage for lawn care business. So essentially they were dividing the property residential, commercial. And so they never, couldn't get approval because it's not by definition a home occupation.
Gotcha, so with all the other ones that do live there, it's okay?
If they come back before us, because again, it's the, the criteria of whether or not they can just do it, or whether or not they have to come and get approval. Are things like, are there, and I don't have the ordinance pulled up, but are customers coming to the business? You know, are anybody working at the business that doesn't reside at the property? Is there any activity going on outside of the home or is everything contained within the home? Uh, I'd have to pull up the ordinance to remember, those are some of the key ones, though, in, in the home or outside the home, customers coming, uh, yeah, things outside the home. Um, that's the ordinance criteria to even come to apply.
Gotcha.
But what do we do in a situation like that? I mean.
Are they parking the equipment on grass?
What's out in the, it's in the back.
Is the city losing money by this? Like, is there?
Yes, they didn't apply for a business license, they don't pay taxes on the business.
Well, a- a- and to be fair, the, the business license is not a moneymaker, it's a money recouper. Uh, we, we have certain work that Pam's people have to do to process it. The license fee is fifty bucks, I think. It, it's not, it by definition cannot be a revenue generator, it can only be to recoup your costs. With that kind of business, the chances we would make any money on sales or use tax would all turn on whether or not they were essentially having stuff delivered that they purchased and had delivered to the address. If they're going to get stuff elsewhere, I mean, they may pay payroll tax, maybe. They may pay other forms of tax, but our only tax revenue is sales or use tax, so.
Buying gas is probably the, and the stuff at the corner store is probably where we're actually getting money from them.
I- if they stop in, in War Acres. I mean, remember, you're, you're long north to south, but very short east to west, and so, you know, there's. So.
Just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention that I just don't feel like we're doing what we should to keep these illegal operators from doing business.
I agree. I had a call this week from against, um, a resident that said there were some after-hours mechanics doing their thing, which is a different one than we've heard recently.
I'd say you probably have more than hundreds of people that do this. And, you know, people buy these houses and they know they're residential and they ignore the fact that it's residential. I don't want to live next to that. If I did, I would have lived next to a commercial area. I didn't. There's people in the middle of my neighborhood, all around, that do it. Nothing gets done.
Yeah.
And that's just the reality. That's what's gonna be frustrating because nothing's going to be done about it, so.
There's a house on Forty-second like that as well. All right, the, other than that, I just wanted to say thank you to Mike for filling in as our mayor last, for the last three weeks. We appreciate all that you did. And then, um, thank you Veronica for helping me put these sheet together about the rates. So that's all I have.
Douglas?
Uh, yeah, thank Mike, he did a great job and, uh, glad you're back safe.
Thank you.
And thank, uh, Chief Patty, the, for the flock cameras, that's awesome. And, uh.
Thank you all for funding them. They're, they're fantastic.
Yeah, and, uh, and Mike, I see, uh, him coming and going every day. So, that's all.
Tribby? Uh, just want to thank our, uh, city employees, public works, the police department, the fire department, do a great job. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone in the room. Morris?
I am just thankful to be a part of a, a great council and I love all the learning experiences every time. I am thankful for all the directors and the chiefs for all the work they do and information they share with us. Um, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone too.
I'm gonna wait on you.
Steel? Oh, man.
I'm the vice mayor.
Yeah. That's how it is.
Uh, well, I've made it my first thirty days on the horseshoe. Um, I've really enjoyed it and, um, I have a lot to be thankful for, just sitting here, being appointed. I think local government matters and governing matters and I've kinda made it my job to just be present, meet Mr. Truman, Chief Coy, I'm coming to you next, Chief Patty, um, and other council members. I've enjoyed having lunch, getting to know. And I look forward to getting to know you guys more, so thank you for the opportunity to serve the community.
Better hurry if you're gonna meet with Roger.
Yeah. He's retiring.
Leaving soon.
I know, it's, it's gonna happen soon.
All right. Well, now I get to go.
Yes, sir.
Uh, first thing, uh, I'd like to thank everybody in the office, like Pam and Veronica and everybody who helped me these past few weeks. So if I didn't know what I needed to do, they'd help me out and tell me. Uh, really is like a great support staff that Roger has. I mean, it's, uh, it's really incredible, the staff that we have at War Acres.
Fantastic.
I want to thank Colin Walke for showing up. I talked with our attorney before I say this. Uh, we've, uh, had this conversation many times with them about this issue. So if he would like to discuss that with the city, we'd be more than happy to meet with him to discuss this issue about drainage.
And if you check property records, Meek does not own it. They, his client owns the property.
November fourth, I went to an Asia Society, uh, celebration and Roger, our mayor, got the Outstanding Civic Leader of the Year award. So, there you go, big deal, so. It just so happened that he was gone, so I had to go for that, so. And then, and then Linda went to one, she went to the, uh,
Miss Panama.
Miss Panama thing?
Yes.
So that leads me to the next thing. I want to thank all you girls that stayed here. Well, there were guys too, right?
Yeah, there's the guys that just showed up.
Hey, so everybody who was a winner, yeah, everybody who was a winner, thank you for putting up with all this and listening to all this for two hours. Uh, we appreciate it. Um, the budget, um, don't think that this budget, like, this is just printed off, like Pam did a lot of work on it. We had to have a meeting, like, and cut some things out of the budget and everybody contributed in each department about cutting things out. We have to work on revenue in War Acres, which means we have to get more businesses in War Acres, so, um, we kinda, Roger, when he came back today, we kinda discussed that. The challenges as council members, we need to, if you go somewhere and you like the business, like I went to a restaurant, I liked it, you give them your card and say, why don't you think about having a business in War Acres? But we have to be promoting the city and it's something I know we're gonna work on, uh, more probably, that we need to do. Because even like Pam said, you know, the revenue's been staying the same all these years, but, I mean, we're not getting new businesses. And we need to do a better job at trying to, there's, if we want to do the things we want to do, expenses can't keep going up without the revenue going up, and so we're gonna have to, to do something else about that. Uh, December second, it's a Saturday, from six to eight at the police station, we have the Christmas tree lighting. Chief Patty, this will be his last Christmas and he doesn't have to be Santa Claus at it. So.
Hard one.
He's very excited about that fact. Uh, but if everybody wants to come out, we also at this meeting before this thing say, if you want to give donations as council members toward the candy for the goodie bags for the children, to see the mayor and give it to him, and then we have a person that's just gonna go get the candy and then we can text you to say when we're gonna do the party. we can text you to say when we're gonna do the party, it's not like a party Pam knows.
You left over Halloween candy?
We have, we have a, well, we don't really have a party, but we have a meeting, like, in here, where we open the bags, put all the candy and everything, it's assembly line, we put it all together. There's stuff donated from the police and the fire that goes in it for the kids, uh, and then candy canes and other stuff, and then if you want to come from six to eight, it's a good time to see the people that are there, walk around. If the weather's bad, we've already talked with Chief Patty, we have it inside, in the courthouse. So either way, it's covered, and the tree's up, it's just not lit, but it's up. And, what else? I think that's it, wish everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
And, uh, and to add on to that, we're gonna have, uh, the Silver Strings from Putnam City, they're gonna come perform, as well as, uh, some people to do some, uh, carols, as well, so. So I just want to say thank you, uh, Mike, for stepping in, uh, for the time that I was gone. It, uh, you got more appreciation, and I'm so glad, man. And, uh, thank you for just doing all those things, I could go and do the things I need to do. Uh, going to China, I was the only person from Oklahoma that was invited to the Sister City Summit. A lot of people said, "How in the heck did you get here?" And it's because I showed up and they invited me. So, um, it's really amazing, uh, we for the State of Oklahoma, that's been established since nineteen eighty-four with Governor Nye, and, uh, they're very hospitable and took care of me very well. And, uh, very thankful for that time and opportunity. Police and Fire, thank you guys so much for everything that you guys do, um, and dealing with all the frustrations and all the things that people just don't know or see, so thank you for all that behind-the-scenes work. Mike, you as well, I mean, you do so much, and I am so appreciative for all the work that you do, and the city staff here, Pam and her crew. Mike, for always being here and hanging out. And, uh, the Watermalan royalty, thank you all so much for just showing up and, and hanging out still, so it was really great, so appreciate it. You know, if more people did this, we wouldn't have to have such a hard time finding people to serve. You know, like I said, we're gonna have some, uh, discussions, uh, to getting some last things out of the red, uh, next month, so that's one thing that we're gonna deal with as well. And, again, Veronica for helping, and Mike for putting together that sheet, so we can all be on the same page, it's really great. Steel, congratulations, thirty days in.
Thanks, did I get a chip? No.
No, no chip. And, uh, maybe, maybe, uh, for, and also for going to the, uh, Panama Independence, and, and all, thank you so much for doing that, and just
That was an honor.
Being part of that. And, uh, just reiterate, for December second, thank you for all the work, for the volunteers that helped put that all together, it's been, uh, been a thing, and, uh, really excited for that. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody. So with that, I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, yeah.
Myers?
Yay.
Steel? Yay. Prince?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Schmidt?
Nay.
Mayor?
No.
Motion approved anyway.
All right, adjourn, uh, called a order the Public, uh, Public Works Authority meeting.
I thought they're gonna take your pictures.
Uh, here, we'll get through these couple of things, we'll be good, all right, so called a order, uh, declare a quorum. Individual items may be deleted from the consent docket for discussion under item three, you don't have a motion.
I have a question.
Shoot.
It says approval payment in the claim in the amount of how many dollars? It just has a dollar sign.
Of many.
We're on to Public Works, right?
Correct.
An attached?
Two B.
On part, on B, consent docket, part B.
Right here.
Yeah. Right, part B, the first sentence.
Doesn't have an amount.
That's right, I don't know, it's right here.
It's for the monthly payments.
I know. That, but I should have seen it.
I left the claim, the dollar figure off.
Is it on the attachment?
Oh. Turn it over, Judy, turn it over.
Hey, Matt. Oh, sixty thousand nine hundred and ninety-two.
Oh, okay.
Is that the one?
Unless it changed, no.
That's the minute, see, this is.
That's different. We don't have to list the amount. But if it.
Right, there is a dollar sign, so it's to the amount of sixty-seven, six forty-eight.
I was gonna say, it's on there somewhere, no, that's collected. Right up here's how much, sixty-nine?
Fifty-nine.
It is in the packet, it's not on the agenda.
Is it this fifty-nine?
The fifty-nine?
Fifty-nine, yeah, three twenty-nine, thirty-five.
You, you run into problems when you list too much information if it's not correct. This doesn't have an amount, which means you're approving claims, uh, in, in an amount that isn't listed on the agenda, but it doesn't have to be. So, it's if it says.
Next month, that will be a much larger check.
I- if it said in the amount of ten dollars, then there'd be a problem.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve consent docket, items A through C.
I'll second that.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Steel? Yay. Douglas?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay. Item number four.
I move to adjourn the Public Works Authority meeting.
Second that.
So official.
Morris and Myers.
Morris and Myers, yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Prince? Schmidt?
Yay.
Steel? Yay. Mayor?
Yay.
Mayor's approved.
All right. Item number, uh, sorry, Economic Development Authority meeting, uh, item number one, declare a quorum, consent docket. Individual items may be deleted from the consent docket, and discussion for action under item number three.
And I turned it over, so I know what the claim is for.
It always ends up on the back.
Yep.
I'll make a mo, are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the consent dockets, A and B?
Second it.
Good job.
Myers?
Yay.
Morris?
It was, uh,
Oh, it was Douglas, I'm sorry. Douglas? Now, how about Morris?
Yay.
Steel? Yay. Prince?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay. And, uh, I have to say, it was really cool to actually go to the pancake breakfast that we did. I actually, Steel was there with her family, and, uh, I actually met people that knew my dad from class of sixty-five. Not very many of them left, but. All right, item number three, discussion of possible action on authorizing the chairman to allow the Christmas tree, uh, commitment to per, uh, committee, I assume, to purchase, uh, treats, treat bags and supplies not to exceed three fifty. So this is also where the donations would come in.
This is for the Christmas tree, so whatever donations we get, whatever the difference is, it won't be over three hundred and fifty dollars, so, but there's a, we make about a hundred bags, so.
So where do we make a donation to, just to Pam?
You just give it to Roger, and then he'll give it to Pam, right?
Yeah, or Pam, or. Or the girls up front. Yes. Take a motion?
I move we authorize the chairman to allow the Christmas tree, blah, 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 to not exceed three hundred and fifty dollars.
It's just a Christmas committee, not committed.
Committed, yeah.
The committed.
That's why I said committee, yeah. Who seconded it?
I'll second it.
Douglas?
Morris?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Prince? Yay. Myers?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay. Item, uh, number five, we're just gonna sit here until Tribby does it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second it. I second it.
I'm a seconded.
Douglas, or, uh, Morse. Tribby did, Tribby did.
Tribby, Tribby motion.
That's what I thought, but then he started talking, I was like, well, enough, he did or not, I'm trying to read his face.
Veronica's gonna get you a microphone.
So, so are we voting?
Tribby.
Nay, of course.
Absolutely. You just want to sing her all night long.
I feel good about this.
Morris?
Yay.
Steel? Yay. Schmidt?
Obstand.
Myers?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Douglas?
It's a big chin for.
Mayor?
No.
Up to three.
Passed anyway.